Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Preston County Commission. Today's April 12th, 2022, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Price, Commissioner Stone. Do we have anyone from the public to be recognized that's not on the agenda? Like to entertain and review the bills.
Yes, just to, we have two corrections on your agenda. Your community bank, I believe it was, is, it will be here on the 26th, and there are no fiduciary reports. So those should be scratched out on your agendas.
Okay, yes.
Hi, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I still move that we pay the bills to the property presented in the proof.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to pay the bills as they have been presented and reviewed. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Brings us to our assessor with some tax corrections.
Just one this morning, we just have Ken Adams had recorded a truck on his first property form, but it was actually a barn use and he has a barn sticker on it, so it's forty-four dollars.
Okay, okay, all right.
At this time, we can this tax correction list?
Sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction for Kenneth Adams II as it has been presented from the assessor. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, brings us to our 9:31 appointment with Dennis Pearson Reed, Mayor of Reevesville with an application for annexation by minor boundary adjustment.
If we could, again, commissioners, this is a...
Don't write on this either.
I made him a big note.
Don't write on those one, that are elderly. Just put that out there one more time.
For the elderly population. This is actually kind of a new adventure for all of us. This is the first time in many, many years we've had an application for a minor boundary adjustment for annexation. And we prepared an application, and Reevesville has certainly done an excellent job in bringing that forward. You all received copies on several occasions to go over. What would, how we'd like to proceed is this is their official presentation on their application. So what we'd like to do is the mayor is going to answer any of your questions, but you'll see that our application is actually nine questions, and they have supporting documents to go with that. The prosecuting attorney and I have reviewed their application. Their supporting documents are available and all as we ask, and also to the best of our knowledge, looking at the maps, it seems to meet the mark. But I want you to go, I want the mayor to explain item by item what their application is in case you all would have any questions. And once we move forward with the process, if you believe that this application meets the mark, that it could be successful in other ways as well. If you read the code, it says by petition or election, then we would need to set up a public hearing. That public hearing must be held before the county commission because they're actually, you're actually doing the annexation by minor boundary adjustment. Danielle, and I apologize, I do not know Danielle's last name, but...
It's Parker.
Danielle has done a just outstanding job of providing, we've worked for several months together, and she's done an excellent job for the county commission as well as for the town. So I wasn't sure if you brought a copy, sir, or not. So would you get started with, if you're just going point one through nine?
Before you get started, Mr. Pearson, I'd like to go on record and correct the name, your name. It is Dennis Pearson and there's no Reed. Reevesville is cut off on here. And so just our agenda says Reed as part of the name, but I did not correct it. I knew that when it came out of my mouth and I just kept reading it. And so that is the correction there, it is Pearson.
Right?
That might be the worst anybody's ever been. I think Kathy did a pretty good job of kind of overviewing what we have today. We have the application form that was approved by the prosecutor. Danielle worked diligently on all those answers. We have the affidavits signed by all the property owners that will be affected by the proposed annexation. We already had a survey done of the area. That map is included towards the end. And then a copy of the minutes that we had where we voted to move forward with the process after we've done some due diligence. So we're going item by item. Basically, the businesses in the area and the territory that we want to incorporate is the Reevesville Post Office. It's the only business that we have an interest in at this time. To get to it, we have to talk to other properties though. We've received all those affidavits, like I said, they're all attached. They've all agreed, it's the Reevesville Volunteer Fire Department, K Enterprises, Hospice Care Corporation, and the herbs leasing company. So they've all agreed to the proposed annexation. Like I've included, we've included in the back. We have a survey in the back. Number four on the list of the application form kind of applies to the municipality's plans of providing services to the territory. We don't really have to change anything. The public waste trash pickup is a private company that does all that already. So we don't do any of the trash pickups. The fire protection, the annexation literally begins at the fire hall. It's closer to them than it is my house. So it's basically already covered in the protection. Police protection, if a dispatch goes out, our officers are already the closest one. He's probably gonna be the first on the scene anyway. But it makes it official that it's covered that way. So those items are pretty well covered. Current service providers will remain the same for this district or the annexation. Nothing changes there. Fire insurances and insurance rates should remain same also. As I said, they're still really close to the fire hall and whatnot, so nothing changes there. One of the larger changes that we're gonna see is in item seven. We're gonna have an estimated increase in tax revenue of thirty-three thousand dollars a year. A small portion of that comes from the VNO tax and the property taxes, five thousand total there. We're estimating about thirty-two thousand dollars in revenue increase from the municipal sales tax that we'll be able to collect from the post office. That is strictly an estimate based on Mason Town's newly collected revenue. They're similar towns, similar size, so we feel like that's a pretty good estimate there. But again, just an estimate, could be more, could be less. I feel like we've done, and when I say we, again, this is Danielle. She's done her due diligence on following all the annexation codes and doing her due diligence on proper research and processes we need to follow for this. And that pretty well sums it up. I think one of the biggest things I would like to add to this is, and we've discussed this at our council meetings and at length last night even, that there's a public safety issue with this piece of property. We're one of the few towns that has a post office outside the city limits, and they don't deliver in towns at all, which had I known that twelve years ago. But we have several residents who travel that road via foot or motorized wheelchair, and we don't have the jurisdiction to make it safer right there. So that's one of the things that we really like to look at.
Well, another thing, it might possibly, you talk about safety, it might open the possibility of eventually being able to sidewalk in here and get some green light.
Exactly.
And that would need to make it even safer.
Right, and that's what we're discussing, either a sidewalk or walking trail somewhere.
Yeah, being out of being city limits, they might have that option.
Yeah, and it's a forty-five mile speed zone there, so it's...
Yeah, it's right before it changes to twenty-five.
Right.
I'm sure, I used to live right in town, and it would have always been nice to have a male delivery person.
Yes.
And maybe.
Even once. So that's one of the, from a community standpoint, that's one of the larger aspects of the annexation that we're looking at in the future, trying to improve that area from a public safety standpoint. So at this time, I guess if you have any questions.
I don't have any questions. I mean, you laid it all out here, you've got all the affidavits, all of, all the property owners have no problem with it, so we're infecting four property owners and none of them have a problem. It all said, we're good with it, so.
There was no opposition?
None at all.
We've had some inquiries, basically just clarification, but that's about it again.
Yeah, the big thing is you have, even if somebody had opposition, it strikes me that with all the property owners, they're like, we don't have a problem. And that'd be the ones that affects the, it affects you directly.
I don't think I have any other questions, Dave, do you have anything?
No, I don't, I don't think, you answered those. One of the biggest concerns with any kind of annexation is how the people who are affected. And if they're satisfied, everything's okay with that. And it could be. And you cross that, cross that off, something like that.
The code does specify that it can't be any more than, it can't exceed one hundred and five percent of existing total. Also, it can't exceed one hundred and twenty percent of the current area. This is a very small, if you look at the map, so...
Less than one percent, yeah.
The prosecutor looked at the maps, we looked at the maps to just verify that. I think he mentioned the EMS and he mentioned the fire and...
Everything's in there, it wouldn't change, right.
Really, basically, not much changes other than bringing the post office in.
But in the, it's supposed to be in the city, within the limits there of the town, and so getting that back in makes perfect sense, especially when the services that additionally can be provided with the increase in the...
I think it's, you know, there've been times that annexations looked to be not fair. You know, kind of taking advantage of a strip of businesses or something, and I don't know, something like that. But this is for the good of the people, and that's what it should be about. I think the last one we did years ago was Carolina, had a minor adjustment that squared off some uneven areas, and so it's been a while.
I think they've done a great job of incorporating the, if you look at a big map of this, of incorporating their post office by using a square approach. And I think they've done a good job of that.
They don't like that very much, I don't either, I think it's weird. Good job.
So there's no work here that we need to sign, but we need to set up...
It says, don't write on it.
I think you noticed, she didn't cut that one, she just told me.
Well, that was what I said, if the elderly population need to read mine, it writes in.
Do you need to make a motion to set up a public hearing?
I think that if you find that this could be done by other means, that's what the code says, because you can have it executed by the election, and you can have annexation without an election. And so basically, if you find that it meets your application, then your next step is to set up a public hearing based on the code section, which must be a class two O legal ad, which is in your paper of record, which is the journal. And I'd like Danielle to speak to that, I think it must be fourteen days before.
I know, it was my question.
She already has a copy.
So she has a copy for us to look at. I think that basically what we will have is the last two weeks in April will be your publication, and then you'll hear this item on May third at ten o'clock. And we will treat this like we do any other public hearing. It will be during your regular meeting. We will recess your regular meeting, open the public hearing, hear from those folks. I'm gonna set fifteen minutes aside that day for your public hearing. We've talked at length about, unsure about who might want to come. Then after the public hearing, you can close the public hearing and proceed with an order that if you so desire to do that. The order will be prepared by the prosecuting attorney. I requested that Reevesville have their attorney present for the public hearing as well, just in case that there will be any questions.
All right, so my motion, so my motion needs to be that we, we'll better set up a public hearing for the proposed town of Reevesville annexation for Tuesday, May third.
By, by minor boundary.
By minor boundary adjustments. There we go, that's my motion.
We good? Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that the county commission will conduct a public hearing. Will publish, will publish and advertise a public hearing, yes, sorry. May third, 2022, at ten AM in the Preston County Commission meeting room. And that will be published in our Record of Journal of the Preston County News and Journal by minor boundary adjustment. So I got all that, Danielle?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes, I apologize. This is our first rodeo with this. And we make sure that we get everything done as should be. So, and I would expect by the time another one crosses our desk, we will have forgotten all of the lingo that was...
That's what happened on this, I'm sure.
It's not that obvious.
I mean, we didn't do a vote or anything from the last one we did.
I was at one.
Maybe they changed.
I was at one prior, which didn't...
All right, so everyone voted, and we're good. Good, thank you. Right, Dee Dee, we voted, right?
Yes. You push fast, or you answer, you don't say.
Sometimes it's easy to lose track. When you're distracted by dates, oh, there's... And don't write on that, Dee. In case you need one more. All right, brings us to our next appointment. I apologize, Stacy, we're running a little behind on this. With Stacy Greaser, our victim advocate, with a proclamation, National Crime Victims Rights.
And you guys already have a copy?
We do, yes. Would you like to read that?
I, I'll let you read it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I'm a little spilt first.
All right, please.
Okay. All right, since 1981, National Crime Victims Rights Week has challenged the nation to confront removed barriers to achieving justice for all victims of crime. During this week, we celebrate the accomplishments of the Victims' Rights Movement and reflect on how far we have come. Every April, the Office for Victims of Crime leads communities throughout the country in their annual observation, or observance, sorry, of the National Crime Victims Rights Week. The 2022 theme this year is rights, access, equity for all victims. The theme underscores the importance of helping crime survivors find their justice by enforcing victims' rights, expanding access to services, and ensuring equity and inclusion for all. As Preston County's victim advocate, I'm asking the Preston County Commission to organize April 24th, 2022 through April 30th, 2022 as National Crime Victims Rights Week.
I'll let you read the name.
The 24th through the 30th?
Yeah, the 24th through the 30th.
Okay.
Ton of my old copy.
I'll share yours. Oh, what's this little, what a maker? So I'm with you.
It is. The week is the 24th through the 30th. It's listed on there?
Yeah.
It is. Whereas Americans are victims of more than twenty-six million crimes each year, crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. Whereas crime can leave a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and abilities and of all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. Whereas the entire community has a role to play. Whereas incorporating communities' existing experts and trusted sources of support into efforts to fully serve survivors will develop a criminal justice system response that's truly accessible and appropriate for all victims of crime. Whereas with the whole weight of their community and victim service providers behind them, survivors will feel empowered to face their grief, loss, fear, anger, and shame without fear of judgment, and will feel understood and worthy of support. Whereas the National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 24th to 30th, '22, is an opportunity for committing to ensure that all victims of crime, even those who are challenging to reach or serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of the crime. Whereas the Preston County Victim Advocate requests the Preston County Commission to recognize April 24th through April 30th, '22 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Whereas the Office of Preston County Prosecuting Attorney and the Preston County Victim Advocate asks that public support and assistance continue, not only this week, but throughout the year, as these offices join with RDVIC and other Preston County officials and supporters as they continue to work toward a society where all women, children, and men have the right to live in peace, free from violence and exploitation. And now therefore, we as the Preston County Commission do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through April 30th, '22 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. And the motion to do that, I would be glad to support.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to proclaim April 30th through, April 24th through April 30th, 2022 as National Crime Victims Rights Week. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, thank you. All right, brings us to our ten o'clock, which we're running early on that, so let's go ahead with the approval of minutes.
We approve the minutes of March 22nd, '22 meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for March 22nd, 2022. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
This time, I make a mention that we spent with the readings of AEDs and accept them into the record from March 31st through April 6th.
Sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings and the proceedings in vacation and enter them into record for March 31st through April 6th, 2022. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
We have these state, estates from the courts office, it will be Boyer, Robbins, and Solomon. I will approve those.
Second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlements March 31th through April 1st, 2022 for Boyer, Robbins, and Solomon. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. All right, brings us to our old business. Do we have anything for the care funding?
Just, do we get anything about those AEDs or anything, that pad or anything? Could check with the wingman.
Yeah, well, did you send me what you had?
No, you didn't ask me to, but I can.
Yeah, it'd be helpful if you sent what you had. I have some other things, but I need exactly what you were looking at, Commissioner.
Just of your information, Commissioner Smith had, she said we talked about it for a long time, about AEDs for different buildings. And so it was concluded that maybe that's something that you and I would look at to see.
I just wanted to make sure you had what you had and I haven't received yet.
Yeah, I didn't know you needed it, or I would have sent it.
That's okay, yeah.
And it was suggested that once we get a cost estimate on what it's gonna cost initially to move forward with that request, that we look at the annual expense or how they expire and what that costs.
They have a lot of annual expense, because they have like a pretty long shelf life.
They do, but there's still a maintenance on them. So we need to make sure that we have a funding source.
Well, I know, but I mean, it isn't like you gotta do it the next year. I mean, it's like several years, because like, I see you know on your headband, Dan. I mean, it's like, I know it's like five or six years before you have to look at it.
Yeah, the battery life's pretty long.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of them, I'd see batteries like fifteen years or some ten, pretty standard was ten years.
We just want to make sure that we knew what Commissioner Smith was looking for.
Yes. Okay, anything else on that? All right, we saw five minutes, Kathy, so is there something you want to add?
I'm gonna give it to her by that time. If you want us to kind of fill the gap there. Basically, first item on the agenda is a letter of request for a letter of support for the ongoing Rollsberg Revitalization Committee. This project is basically one that has been going on for some time. It is to make their restrooms ADA compliant. I'd ask that you sign the letter of support for Rollsberg Revitalization.
Is the line up was emailed to us?
Yes, yes, sir.
We, is it all of us?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Move the commission to sign that. Can I second that?
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the commissioners to sign a letter of support for the Rollsberg Revitalization Committee to work on their project. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes.
The next item I have for you is of the ongoing project for PSD number four, which is a FEMA grant. If you remember, we had a bid opening several weeks ago, and it was higher than anticipated. And also because of the delay in manufacturer delivery, I'm asking that the commission president be authorized to sign a request to FEMA for an eighteen-month extension for the period of performance, which would take it from July seventeen, '22 to January seventeen, '24. I'd ask that the president be authorized to sign.
I know that this time, the operator of the president signed this letter requesting extension for the generator budget for PSD four.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the letter for the extension deadline for the Preston County PSD four five generator project. That deadline would go from July seventeen, 2022 to 2024, to July seventeen, 2024. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to note that I got ten dollars that says it will be 2027. This has been a slow...
Thank you.
That's not out, that's not out of reason, I don't think. It's been three years.
Yes. Next item I have is, and I'll go quickly, next item I have is just some maintenance, basic things. The Courthouse Facilities Improvement Grant Project is fast approaching a bid process. We hope to have all the construction, the draft construction details are done. We hope to have a bid pack ready by the end of this month. Tentative date to take that to advertisement would be May. This grant, we must have the project done by December. I think we're in pretty good, we're not anticipating not being able to meet that for two things, cost, which is a variable right now, concerns are cost, and the other is the availability of contractor. Very few contractors do this type of work, so I have met with the Mills Group virtually, by phone. The drone has been flown, so we have our 3D images, so that one is progressing. So on that note, I'll just tell you, I do have a budget revision to incorporate that grant into your budget, since it looks like that hopefully, we might... grant into your budget, since it looks like that hopefully we might get started by June. Um, that basically is $100,000 that you're receiving from state funding, and we have set aside number 50. Uh, now, that is not the project in its totality, but that's to sell your grant portion. Uh, and you do have other budget revisions, so I'll hold that. Um, I am reaching out to, uh, uh, we need to clean the bell. Uh, we have used case blocks on the bell, but now, as age goes on and it is, uh, it turns green like all those instruments do, and so, uh, we're going to, uh, reach out to Jamie Lester. If you remember, Jamie Lester is the person that commissioned that bell, we commissioned to do the bell, so we're going to reach out to him.
Maybe give one of the community corrections people that like, take some rassle to them.
Well, we're going to find out the proper way to, uh, um, clean that bell. Uh, your court report for your confidence of the facilities plan is, has been submitted. It was due the 20th, and I submitted that this morning. Um, our new facilities manager begins next Monday. Uh, we do have, I have an orientation period kind of set out to go through some housekeeping matters and those kind of things. Very anxious to have him. We have a lot of projects to, uh, get started with, and one of our first missions for you will be to just give you an overview of how we're going to approach those. So you can anticipate that in the next month. Um, I'm not sure that I shared, uh, we did get official approval from the state on our budget, which, uh, was really good news. All your pay increase information that they have requested has been submitted, and also all the documents from all the office holders that were requesting the pay raise has been, uh, submitted. So, um, I think that's, uh, just briefly, uh, meetings coming up. Um, we do, you have a bid at T-Mobile today at noon. You also, Yonderville, i- is a meeting that's coming up, uh, tomorrow at 1:00 PM at the 911 Center, which will bring all of us together who have anything to do with mass gathering coordinates and how that will proceed. Did you get that, Daniel?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, deadline for your applications for your county coordinator are Friday. Uh, Mr. LaRue starts on Monday, also on the 18th. I have a Zoom meeting with, um, the state of West Virginia and, uh, EDA and Prodigy concerning that broadband project. Um, I think, I think that's it for today unless you have any questions.
All right. Pretty good, Kathy, and making good.
Hey, there you go. Sorry, Dan.
Now, moving on with Dan LeDier, Mason Town Volunteer Fire Department, uh, with the First Responder Program.
And I've got to apologize to Dan. I, I thought, uh, Dr. Conley was here today, and he's actually here next Tuesday, so Dan, you may have to come back.
Yeah. We're talking.
I'm sorry, it was my, thank you. I had a long day.
Yeah, thanks, sir. All right. Um, those papers I just gave you there, that's the, uh, the monitor that I spoke to you all over your about, um, that we have to purchase, uh, in order to, uh, run our AOS program. And, uh, you can see there on the back page that, or the second page, I believe it is, there the, uh, the cost of it. And, um, I had, um, I had their aldermen go through this with me to make sure it matched everything they had on their trucks. I had camp aldermen go through it and make sure everything matched. So this equipment would work with their equipment, their medics and everything, you know, to make sure everything was the same. Uh, got their approval on it, uh, everything is, everything's great. It all works, um, everything is fine. Um, mutual aid agreements, um, I got mutual aid agreements drawn up for all the ambulance services in the county, uh, which allows, um, if we have one of our medics that is treating a patient and, uh, one of the, I'll use camp as example, truck comes, our paramedic can step and get right on their trucks and, and go on their ambulances. Uh, that's what that mutual aid does. It allows, allows them to get right on their trucks and work. They don't have a problem with that, uh, which, a couple of them, they're employees anyways, you know, um, so, but, um, that's what that mutual aid agreement does. Uh, we've got a mutual aid, uh, with everyone in the county and in the process of getting, uh, one with Mon County, because sometimes we work, Mon County has to come up if, you know, there isn't anybody in the county, uh, we have trucks come up from Mon County. So, uh, one of our paramedics works for Mon County, and we're in the process of getting that mutual aid from Mon County also. That way, we're covered all the way around us, um, that our medics can work on their trucks, you know, which is another great thing. Um, we've agreed, uh, this is just for the monitor. Uh, we've agreed, uh, as, as fire department, Mason Town Fire Department, to ourselves, uh, purchase all the drugs, all the medications, and everything that is required, uh, for the medics to use to carry on the truck. We're going to buy those, uh, we're going to, you know, everything that it takes, uh, to get licensed, to get an inspection. Our inspection's coming up. Uh, we've already called, uh, to get this inspection, to get it going. Um, so we get this program going just as quick as we can. Um, we've already got that set up. Um, we're due for an inspection in June anyways for our BLS license, uh, because we are a licensed DMS. And, uh, what they've agreed to do is go ahead, since they're going to, uh, upgrade us to an AOS, is just come and do it early and do it all at the same time. Just go ahead. And, uh, because our rescue truck is a licensed DMS vehicle and our chase vehicle, we have two that are licensed DMS vehicles. So they're just going to do it all at one time, upgrade us all. And, um, I think that's really basically it. Have any questions for me? Uh, we're, you know, I'm, I'm asking for any amount of help you can give us on this monitor, is what I'm asking for. Because it is a tremendous amount of money, as you can see.
And it's not the 45, 397.
Yes, that's correct. Yes. That's true. You know, it's $45,000 just, uh, just for that one thing. You know, like I say, we're going to, we're going to take the cost on us, everything else. Uh, you know, we're volunteers, we're not getting paid for any of this. Uh, all the drug costs and everything, Mason Town's going to do that just as a service to the community. You know, we're praying the levy's going to go through, you know, for that support.
See, I just want to make sure, so it's going to be the 42, 427, because that's, it includes the taxes.
Yeah, that's included.
Yeah. And that's got the warranty with it and everything, you know, that's all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's got the service and everything with it. That's the total package. Which, we're really excited. We do have four paramedics that are members of the, yeah, we do have four. And they all work, um, you know, they all have jobs with other ambulance services. So, you know, we're not, we don't want to mislead anybody and think that we're going to have a paramedic 24/7.
Right.
It's, it, it's not going to be that way, you know, but we got, you know, we got paramedics, uh, for example, one works for camp, lives in Mason Town, you know, he works night shift. So, you know, there's going to be times he's available in the day, which is great, you know. Most of the other ones work day shift, they're going to be available at night. Uh, so, but, you know, I don't want to mislead anybody and think it's a 24/7 thing. We're all volunteers, and they're volunteering their time and stuff. So, you know, we're going to try to give as much coverage as we can, you know. That's how it works.
Do you think it would be possible that you could sit down with this EMS advisory group that, that is, you know, been kind of working through the process and, and, um, and explain to these people who are at ground level on this, uh, what, what you're going to do and, and how you want to proceed. Shouldn't delay it much, but it might be maybe three weeks towards another meeting.
There's a meeting Thursday.
Yeah, it's full. It just, it's, I talked to the doctor about doing that, and he said, you see, we have a little bit, just came back, but we can actually get a doctor, maybe sit down and do it individually. Because, you know, it all plays into this overall coverage, which what you're doing adds to it.
Would it be helpful if Dan provided an email to, uh, Dr. Conley and the committee members and just explaining?
Yeah, that is something, so that, you know, we can't move. I don't think we can move forward without having that conversation.
Well, that way.
And the sooner we do that, the better.
Yeah.
You know.
Do you have everybody's email address there on that committee?
Justin probably does.
Justin, do you?
I think he does.
Okay. Okay, so here with Justin, and, and because they have a meeting coming up, and since his request is kind of, uh, timely and he needs an answer, so he can move forward as well, or, or at least know what he's looking for, then, um, if he provided them an email, even though they might be packed, they'd at least have some idea of what. And that's, and, and, and I apologize, I thought Dr. Conley was here today.
Well, yeah, and, and I, I thought maybe it's going to be next week when Dr. Conley is here.
Yeah, I thought we were.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah, yeah.
True.
I thought, well, that worked out, he'll be here.
Yeah.
And, uh, but, but since he's, all these people put a lot of effort into, you know, he missed the whole picture in preparation for changes and, and everything, I think that would be.
I know the ambulance services, I've probably talked to everybody, but, uh, for Rollsberg, I haven't talked to Rollsberg, but, um, I haven't talked to Dr. Conley. I did.
Well, there's, there's a, yeah, and so part of those folks that are on that advisory are aware, and, uh, so, and now Justin is more aware.
Yeah, if you want to get us something, write in the DNO to me, if you have any other assessment, also, please. Okay. What, what do you want me to, what your project is and what you're seeking, just an overview like you gave here?
This project for this, during the monitor?
And your interviews and.
And what your plan is.
Right. And I think it's important that we make it understood that it is not, you know, guaranteed 24/7, that it's going, but, I mean, the need in the, the Valley District area is, is critical, you know, the whole area cleared down to Bellasville and Tunnelton. There's no, you know, trucks that are, you know, 100% dedicated to those areas, and so the fact that you guys can fill the gap there is, is wonderful. And so we need to, uh, make a decision and, but we need to incorporate Mr. Dr. Conley.
You know, we were, um, you know, when this all started, we, we were talking about, you know, our first due area. But then, the more we get to talk to people, the, you know, they're saying, you know, camp is a good example because they cover that area most of the time. They're saying, hey, you know, there's times that we don't have a paramedic and we might be a new one, you know? And most of their trucks go by.
Sure.
Go through Mason Town going morning down, that's the way they go, you know, and stuff. And, uh, so, you know, whatever, I mean, whatever works out, works out, but, you know, the whole, originally, when we started, was just for our due area, but.
Oh, but needs greater than that.
I, I, that's what I think. If this program really takes off and gets started and stuff, it's probably going to be more than that. And the ambulance services are talking about, because they have a $150 medic fee, okay? If, if, between BOs and AOs, if a patient goes to an AOS treatment, it's $150 more than a BOs treatment. So the ambulance service is talking about maybe, uh, giving us that $150 if we provide them with a paramedic, because they can bill that $150 for AOs, which would help cover some of our costs if they did, you know? Because it's not going to be cheap for us. You know, we, that's what I'm saying, this all started out because I was trying to take care of my first due area. I mean, I'll tell you the truth, that's what I was concerned about was, because we don't have an ambulance. But like you say, I think it's going to turn into a greater thing. I think, you know, a bigger, I really do.
The whole EMS picture is changing now. And, and what is it, be in two years or four years or whatever, I think, we don't know for sure. Right now, we're in that, uh, transition and, and it's, it's a constantly moving target. Uh, but anytime services can be approved, is, is, you know, as well as I do as responders, that, that you've got to do what you can do.
Yeah.
So, but, but because this is, uh, you know, it must have its ties to the EMS program and, and I, I think that for everybody to be on the same, this advisory group is really, really good, okay? And they're looking at the economy of, uh, and, I mean, we have a CPA who's looking at how everybody's spending their money, you know, and it's like, hey, can you do this or this, you know, to, to change that, to, to save money to use in other ways? And we have, uh, the prosecutor who's working with us to make sure that everything is, you know, that approved that way. And, uh, and then we have the medical director at the hospital, Dr. Downey, who's part of that, and Dr. Conley, and, you know, Justin from the 911 angle. It's a pretty effective thing, why don't you just slide right in there and talk the language?
So we just need to put you guys together. Okay. Yeah, that's not a, you know, that's not a problem. And, and I, I, I had a picture in mind, you talked about the two-year thing or three-year thing or whatever. It'd be great if someday we would have paid paramedic sitting in our station for that response. It's like I say, everything always comes to Mason Town.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't have to be a great big, you know, if you're paying just a paramedic and a driver sitting there, you wouldn't have to have a transport unit, you know, you'd get, just to get that out the door. That would be great.
But the picture of how this is going to be, it, it's going to get better, but how it will look, I, I, I think we all don't know for sure, but just, yeah, anyway.
Well, Dan's right.
Yeah.
I can give you that. I'm giving it all I got to get it rolling, so we can see if we can get her going.
Yeah.
That's, I give it my best.
Can I ask one question now?
Sure.
It's not for you.
Oh, cool.
Kathy, for clarification. Um, is this, can this be taken out of the CARES money? I assume it can because of some of the other things, but it's something that we need to look at because we're going to look at this and discuss it. Is there a possibility we take it out of there?
You're saying, does it need to qualifications?
Yes, it does need to qualifications. I think it does, but I.
If you have given to EMS, or so, my answer would be yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I thought I did, I just wanted to make sure, for sure. Okay, thank you.
I, I think, I, I get some reading on it, and I think, being since we're licensed, I think if we're EMS, we're a licensed DMS agency. So if we were, I don't think it would, but yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. I thought it so, and I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
It'd probably fit any of those funding events that we have out there hanging over us.
Except.
It would fit your contributions if it fitted for you, that means.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
It's pretty good. All right, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you all, appreciate your time.
Be in touch to get it.
Okay.
Hey, Dan, do you think we could get that to Justin before this meeting on Thursday?
Yeah, I'll try to get something to him. Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Next up, we have, uh, Justin Wolf with OEM 911 EMPG Grant Award Document.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Have a, uh, an EMPG Emergency Management Performance Grant Award document that we are requesting you all sign. Um, it's pretty delayed, but that kind of seems to be the way things are going lately. It's a 2019 grant, uh, we've got this for several years. And what this allows is for, um, partial reimbursement of Dwayne and my salaries. So I've got an, an award letter that needs to be signed if you so wish, this page, and then also, um, Kathy's typed up, um, another letter. This is a supplemental, uh, form, and basically what this is saying is that, um, we didn't use any CARES funding for our law position, because what I'll probably do is be back hopefully within a few weeks with an EMPG supplemental grant award, so that way we can get, um, part of our administrative assistance salary as well. Usually supplementals don't cover quite that much, but there's some extra money this year, so we're going to try to go ahead and, and recoup, uh, 50% of that.
You're going to be pretty good at it.
Yeah, we've been pretty successful.
A lot of loose money down there.
Yeah, exactly. But, um, so one's for the award, one is for the supplemental, and just like I said, it says, none of the CARES money we use for our office, it was for like law enforcement and major staff and, and.
No salaries for OEM 911, where, where asked for reimbursement for the CARES. If you would, he has two requests actually. He has the EMPG grant request, and then that the other would be, uh, to, uh, go with an application for supplemental, so it would be two questions.
Will we, uh, approve and sign the, uh, EMPG Performance Grant Award that, uh, the 2019 grant, uh, applicant. Will we approve and sign the EMPG Performance Grant Award, the 2019 grant application?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to, they, that's one part of the motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the 2019 EMPG Grant Award Application. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
I think the other motion would be to provide documentation that, on the cares funding to go with the supplemental grant request. Yes, sir.
And that we received the cares funding for...
The president be authorized to sign.
Emergency Management and that the president be authorized to sign a letter that says no cares funding to use.
Will I second that?
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the president to sign the letter for cares funding that was received by the Preston County Commission from the state of West Virginia. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. I apologize, sometimes I forget who made the motion. All right, there we go.
And last thing I have, if you all have a moment, this is Public Safety Telecommunicator Week. And I apologize, we didn't move on the agenda for that, if you have time for proclamation, if I miss allowing.
It is actually, I have it written down to acknowledge that in our commissioner's comments today.
Well, that's kind of up my alley.
Yes, sir.
Whereas public safety telecommunicators perform a critical function when emergency occurs, requiring police, fire, or ambulance, as well as those related to forestry and conservation operations, highway safety and maintenance activities. Whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunicators daily serve the citizens of the United States by answering their calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services and by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. Whereas professional telecommunicators are critical to our county's emergency response and homeland security services, dispatching law enforcement, firefighters, emergency medical services, and other emergency responders 24 hours a day, seven days a week, no matter what. And whereas professional telecommunicators are not visible as the men and women who arrive on the scene of emergencies, but provide the vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Preston County Commission does hereby proclaim this week, the week of April 10th through the 16th, '22, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Preston County in honor and recognition of our telecommunicators and the vital contributions they make to the safety and wellbeing of our citizens. They are pretty special people, they really are. What a tough job. You know about that, don't you, Melissa? That's been a long time, if you did it.
16 years, I believe. Do I have a motion?
I move that we proclaim this week as the Public Telecommunicators Week.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded to proclaim April 10th through the 16th as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat Hart. Thanks.
Sure. Yeah, everyone got it all, it's all the same. Been a few years since we've done one of these, I think maybe 2015, I think Craig signed the last one, so it's been a...
Been a few years since we've done the proclamation.
I'm glad that, I was up there and knew that at least on my little Facebook thing, say thanks. And then Samantha, I'm sure, has been invited here for everybody.
I should do something for her. I think we've got a whole basket full of stuff to do.
I think maybe it's the age term by the...
Right, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we, something you have to see.
That's so funny, I'm supposed to hear. Maybe we need to give him a post-it to remind him.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hey, thanks. Nice mix cooking on the black stuff.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, we're moving forward this year.
All right, moving along, we have, I apologize for being running behind Susan. We have Susan Hardesy of the McRue Society with a request, requesting permission for installing the Arboretum signs on the McRue grounds. You have a letter describing the installation. I'm here just to answer questions if you have any. I do apologize for the black and white printouts in your examples. I have the color, brilliant color, that will be part of the actual installation.
Yes, Owen.
One of the blessings of the pandemic in closing our doors, it allowed us to shift our attention to the outdoors surrounding the McRue House and the impressive collection, ancient trees there. Several of them do, it's hard to tell a true age without cutting down a tree, which is self-deading. But both Turner Sharp and another of our guests estimated that at least two of them do go back to Mr. McRue's lifetime, the European larch and the European beech, which makes sense. And a ginkgo, which is especially unusual coming from Asia, likely came from seeds brought back by missionaries supported by Mrs. McRue's Foreign Mission Auxiliary. Her son was a missionary in India and through her church, she established the Women's Foreign Mission Auxiliary. That was their easy way of visiting and saying thank you and giving a token of what their time abroad had been. When you realize the range, Turner, I use Turner's quotation all the time, you have a treasure here, really. You have that array, that variety, that exotic, as well as unusual domestic trees. We have four different kinds of magnolias on the property and none of them is the traditional magnolia that you see in people's yards. So, yeah, and so the map that was done was thanks to a grant from Friends of the Cheap Railroad Program last year. The Arboretum-style signs will allow anyone to walk the property and notice what is unusual about any particular tree. We're not, we're not putting a post with the American chestnut because Bob Seifert has already done a wonderful job of designating it. And we're not putting one by a kind of common honeysuckle that I didn't even know we had until I started mapping the property. So I don't know whether it's yellow or peach, so we're not, I don't want to do any, I don't want to mark anything that I'm not really sure of. And it's not in bloom yet to be able to say with certainty, but there will be 26 other posts.
It's kind of hard to imagine that these things have historical, you know, you see, that's a pretty big bush here, that's a pretty tree, but to know the connection with the original.
The spice bush was especially interesting to me because it makes sense. As valued as it was to an early family, the berries, the bark, the twigs, the leaves, all had either food value or a seasoning value, or could be brewed to create a poultice. And it makes sense, I can see Mrs. McRue coming out to pluck leaves or check the berries and to use. It was there for a purpose. So that was an eye-opening discovery for me. I just buy all spice and... Harvest the bark and let it dry, and dry it up to create...
Well, you gotta think about the times.
Yes, I mean, and that heritage plant is right there for us to be able to share the significance, the connection with our past.
Well, I don't see any issue with it because, I mean, you clearly stated in the thing you weren't going to clean concrete grounds if anything ever happened, it's easy to move the signs, so...
The historical marker for Mr. McRue, that's, that's a keeper.
Well, that's different.
That's definitely, that's permanent. These were subject to...
Correct.
I fringe every time there's a hot wind that comes through.
Well, unfortunately, that's what happens, trees do, they're like anything, a creature, they do have a life cycle.
We haven't lost a full tree since Superstorm Sandy, I guess. No, it was the duration.
Never done.
It was the duration.
Well, we watched it.
Yes.
Well, I, I make the motion that we authorize and approve this request for permission and install these Arboretum signs on the ground.
Yeah, second, and thanks for coming.
Thank you, it will truly be an enhance and a holding for the entire public of Preston County.
When's it going to happen?
Again, I think you need to act on your mission.
Long day. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the installing of the Arboretum signs on the McRue grounds. Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes. And maybe something in conjunction with Arboretum Day.
Well, our hope, this is the first domino to be put in place, get your permission to dig the holes. Second is finding a means to dig that many holes in a timely manner. We would love to be able to have some kind of dedication at the Celebrate West Virginia Day. But if that's not possible, because 26 holes is a lot to try to dig in a defined period of time, we may carry it through to September.
I do have a question, what is the, maybe we could talk afterwards, but what is the, as far as the holes, what do they have to be, what's the dimension?
The posts will be four by four and 24 inches deep. I do think misutility, we do need to call misutility because of the, the wide array of places you're going to dig.
Yeah, because you guys have to mark, you have to put a flag, wherever you're going to put one, so they can tell you.
Susan, it just needs to be 10 days before... Right, and it may require us to call, so we'll get together on that.
Okay. First, we have to get the...
Sure, I understand.
Digging the holes.
Yes.
Who would, who might help us and get the air...
Well, I just know that there's a lot of little handy gadgets that I know a lot of area farmers have that have actually drilled down, do that, it's very easy to do. If we get everything, I think we can assist it. We'll figure that part out as a volunteer project.
Wonderful. Assist it, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Susan. All right, moving on to the Sheriff's Department, we have Melissa Hart here with a budget revision.
Just moving some money around from internal budget revision line items in the K-9 and law enforcement.
What, I mean, when I saw the one that is adding to the K-9, I think, what's that? It just came up short and said you need to supplement it, or you have a new...
Deputy Stark has dog Oaken, we had to retire him. So we're replacing him.
How many dogs do we have?
We have two now.
You've got Childers and you've got...
Children and Mitter.
And then one.
We're wanting to get back to that.
And then Stock it would be, we used to have three, and then we had Dawson when he formed a show, too. I can remember.
Yeah, it's...
So we have our K-9 animal and our K-9 car, but we have a K-9 truck. We're replacing, replacing Oaken.
That's not the only one we have, is it?
No, the other one was from the county, the courthouse facilities, and that was it that I'm aware of. No one else emailed any other...
Best of my knowledge, that's it.
And at this time, I make the motion to approve both of the provisions, I think that's what's added to it.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the budget revisions and approve those for the Sheriff's Office and then, of course, in our office budget revision for courthouse facilities improvement grant. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
All right, moves us on a little late coming in, and we apologize with the Friends of Cheap, Amanda Pickler with a letter of support for Cheap River Trail Project.
Thank you very much, good morning. No need to apologize, I got on the agenda quite late, so thanks for squeezing me in. I am here to ask for truly updated support letters for our Cheap River Railroad Trail Project. We, my phone is ringing, excuse me. We are getting ready to move to construction finally. Actually, right now Owen can't be here because the Trailhead project is, the construction, required construction meeting is this moment, so Trailhead is moving along. And we have updated figures from our engineers for the trail construction. So to remind everyone, this is eight miles of trail, it includes eight bridges, and that is why I am here. We received, we had the benefit of working with the State Rail Authority to do the structural evaluation of the bridges, which we had done cursory evaluation before. But for those who've been paying attention for a long time, it's been now, since 99, since the railroad was in use, so those bridges have not been serviced or maintained in any way since that time. And the corridor, for the most part, has really good bones, the trail surface, but we needed to get in there and make sure that the bridges were safe for EV2, which is the emergency vehicle access. Remember, we can't drive other vehicles over it, but we need to be able to help someone there in need. So that structural assessment was done pro bono by the State Rail Authority's engineer team, which was a huge cost savings. But of course, now we know how much it's going to cost to fix some bridges, and we need more money. So we have 2.3 million in hand, and we have made a request, community-funded project request, FY23 to Congressman McKinley and Senator Manchin. We're asking for $500,000 to grow into our construction budget, and we anticipate being shovel-ready in 2023. So we feel like the timing's good, we'll be able to spend the money appropriately, efficiently, and someone can come cut a ribbon and take a hook that we hook. So as such, we are here to request updated letters of support from this group, and we have one for each, thanks to Kathy, she split them up. We have one for Senator Manchin and one for Congressman McKinley. We did submit our requests on Friday, they were due, one was due Sunday and one was due Monday, so we did get them in without this information, and we just told the contacts that we would forward these letters if, and hopefully when we have them. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I do have, you know, a detailed cost estimate from July of last year, which we might as well throw this in the fire as well. But we do have some numbers on paper, if anybody would like to see them. But if there's any questions, I'm all ears.
What's the first part that you're working on? You said you're meeting right now.
The Trailhead, so that is the project that will include the river access, the pavilion, the Keith Pitzer Memorial Pavilion and Stage that you guys are able to contribute. Right there at the bridge.
Yeah, right there at Preston.
We were able, because of the, because of the soil issues with the railroad, and we, not to our desire, but we would have preferred to move on the trail before the Trailhead. But now here we are with, we're ready to go on the Trailhead, and we still have some funding needs with the trail. So we're going to keep pressed aboard with the Trailhead because that will allow river access, fishing access, a gathering place. And we are hopeful that once we also do the big bridge, which is going to be the first big step, 430-foot trussel bridge, that that becomes the showcase. And people can still come, you know, take their selfie, take pictures, go fishing, go for a little short walk, but we won't be able to complete the full eight miles until 2023. So it's not the order of operations we would like, but that's how you run a river, you read it and you make a move. And that's what we're doing right now, is just trying to roll with the punches. And that's all, that's what we're doing right now, is just trying to roll with the punches and spend the money responsibly. So I'm here to ask for these letters of support to be, to be signed by the commission. We really appreciate your continued support, and someday we'll be able to ride on this trail.
But we got beautiful ones down the long river.
Yes, and really, I think the other component that we don't often mention, it's going to essentially double, double the access to the river for fishing.
That's awesome.
We talk a lot about the trail itself, but to be able to get there and fish, and we've got some beautiful fish that would love to be caught by locals and tourists alike, and so.
Well, that's a nice addition for down.
That's all appreciated.
At this time, I move that we approve.
Do they need to be signed? No.
That's actually the same letter.
It's the same letter.
Same letter, it's two different options. That we approve and sign the letter of support to Congressman and Senator's also Friends of the Chief.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the commission to sign the letters of support for the Friends of the Chief to both Senator Manchin and Congressman, Congressman McKinley. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have an indication here, out in this hole?
We were encouraged to apply, but I don't know if they would encourage anyone. I don't know.
Valid point.
You know, sure. And, you know, we looked at, of course, we researched the FY22 funding requests, and it certainly included similar projects, and I think, I think this is very viable because we've already got our environmental appearances. I mean, we're going to have 100% plants.
That's right, we're ready to receive.
It's ready to go.
We are ready, there's nothing, and we were able to attach.
That's a big hurdle.
That shouldn't be enticing, we're really committing decisions.
We were able to attach, they call it a Fonzey, the findings of no significant impact letter with this, so basically that's like the, you know, we're, we're good to go, so we'll see. There's a lot of other needs. I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, naive to that. We were thrilled to see Rollsboro Stewart get funded and, and Austin Spence money. I'm going to scan them, or do you want to make a copy?
I will.
Yeah, and then I'll scan them. So we, you know, we're throwing our hat in the ring. We really need, we're going to need more than that to realize it as well. And so, but the plan is.
Did they tell you how to fix it, those bridges?
So we, we did the structural evaluation, and now we have a change order from our engineers to complete the design of the bridges. So most of it is, we're not going to really tackle deferred maintenance, it's just like the immediate things. So for example, there's one location that I bet most people have seen when they're driving Route 72 to Rollsboro. It's a logical, call it, they call it the Big Eddie, but it's in between some of the big rapids, and if you look across, you can see concrete forms that are like all different colors, that someone like, it's like they stacked them up. And what happened was during the flood, there was a huge feature there, and it made where there wasn't action against that, that bridge, it made a huge circulating eddy, and it just beat the heck out of that retaining wall. So that's the big one. And we also have to do work on the Little Heather Run Bridge, which is the access to Bruce Wiley's family property there, and that does require work below the high watermark, so we've got a full army.
I know, you're going across that bridge.
Yeah, and we'll be spending a half million dollars in super silt fence, you know? So it's starting to, it's kind of ironic to be the, the greenie on the other end looking saying, man, half a million dollars for silt fence? But we need it to keep, you know, of course, we have to hold ourselves to the same standards, but we're excited. So thank you so much for your support, I don't need to gobble up any more time. It was ironic that we had this open today because we were supposed to be having our work meeting today with First.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, brings us down to our commissioner's comments.
Well, the telecommunications thing, that's, that's, that's really a big thanks to them. We have other meetings the rest of the week, it's kind of a busy week.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Well, today at noon, we went over to T-Mobile Playground Check Presentation for here for Parks and Rec, which is awesome, but I got to go over and do that here in a little bit. And really, that's, that's it, I got a veterans, a naked veterans meeting on Thursday, but that's all. Everybody have a happy future.
Okay. Had some interesting calls with the DOH and citizens reaching out for various issues. So I've been working in conjunction, trying to get answers for different projects around the area. They keep releasing, you know, different roads are going to get paved or what, what's happening, and it's just interesting, some of the deadlines that they're putting on this stuff, because traditionally, that's not really been the case, but they'll say it's going to get done, but we never have like the true by when. And so with it being in the contractor's hands, we all know that there are fees, fines for not getting projects completed by, by a certain time, so. Anyway, been working on a couple different things there. Of course, the T-Mobile dedication today for the PC Park Award that was granted, the brilliant award that they received in T-Mobile is at noon. And also, I had intended to talk about the, I was glad Justin brought back that proclamation because that is, that is a big deal. You know, people don't understand sometimes, a lot of the time, that the extra stress and added worry to those individuals receiving that call, you know, when you call 911, that person is taking the brunt of that person's emotion and anxiety because of the situation that's involving usually a lot of times a loved one, frantic with the loss of a loved one, or a home, or a car accident, and there's just so much burden that's placed upon those people receiving that call. And so they do need that special time to honor those people because they are like a first-line, you know, responder.
They are very first.
Yes, yes, and so it's very important that we take a moment and recognize those people. So, yes, from the bottom of our hearts, the commission is always very, very thankful to them and all of our first responders, but sometimes they're forgotten because they're not the one on scene, you know, they're behind, behind the telephone, they're behind the telephone, taking those calls, so very important. This week, I do have actually, tonight, a full board economic development meeting at the EDA office, several on that board, and also there's a lot of different things coming up. Another public forum out in the Brewston area on the 28th, I believe, or 29th?
29th.
29th, out at the North Preston area, watch where candidates will be attending that. So one thing I would like to encourage is that the Chamber Forum was recorded by Tri-State Productions and put out on their, on YouTube.
On YouTube.
YouTube page, and so, you know, that's a good place to go. It seems like in what I, some of the feedback I've gotten from various candidates for many of the positions out there is that two minutes just isn't enough to communicate what you're wanting to advocate and work for in the county, no matter what position they're, they're seeking to be elected for. So if you have a chance to watch that and you have questions, I want to encourage people to reach out to these candidates and, and talk with them a little one-on-one, or, you know, whatever it might be, a lot of them have social media platforms and other ways to get ahold of them, so you need to be engaged and speaking with these candidates to understand what it is that they're wanting to help with in the county. It's, it's very important that we all be engaged in that. So if I could, early voting begins on the 27th of April. Of course, that will be occurring down at the Election Center, so just to remind folks of that. And the other note I'd like to make is how encouraging it is that during this particular season with appropriation monies out there, that Preston County has really risen to the occasion. I mean, the letters of support that have come out of the county commission have been for just about, touched just about every area in, in our county, so I want to commend those folks that are really, really going after for infrastructure, for tourism, for the chief, for the many, many things that are happening. It's exciting time for me, for Preston County, because it shows that we're really getting engaged in, from economic development to tourism, I think it's a great thing, so just a note.
Does anyone else have anything? All right, then this meeting is adjourned.
So Samantha, is the DOH actually on the chief's or are they on the county?
Well.
Close the medium a little.
I did have confirmation today, Dwayne, and a couple interesting questions. One question that had come was about road out of the Hurst area, and that was half of the route, because they promised that it was going to be paved, they ground that up and made a mess of it, you know. So it passed the U.K., they started the contract. Yeah, yeah, and so my concern was then is that there was a ton of land moving in, and she didn't, she didn't.